Stand for a moment of silence and then we'll ask Mr. Showalter to lead us in the pledge of flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Shall we call a roll?
Yes, sir. Mrs. Singer-Erdley, Mr. Lesby?
Here.
Mrs. Lesby Mitchell?
Here.
Mrs. Tingleseems? Mr. Showalter?
Here.
Mr. Stone?
Here.
Mrs. Tackett?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Well, we have a quorum, but just barely. I'd gotten a text early this morning from Ms. Seames indicating that she could not attend. Apparently, Arlene got a text from Polly about forty minutes ago and said she could not attend. And I learned from Tammy that Mr. Thompson was not going to attend. Let's see, if we could, each of you should have a copy of the meeting minutes from our last regularly scheduled meeting. If you'd like to take a moment to look those over for any possible corrections or additions.
Motion is there written, Mayor?
Thank you.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. Also, each of you should have received a copy of our latest check register. If you could indicate if you received that. Thank you. Before we get into the normal order of our business tonight, we've got some really special things that we get to do tonight. And Chief Bossy is with us. And we have had, we have had a flurry of promotions to senior positions. And we're delighted to have those officers that are being promoted come before the council tonight with Chief Bossy and receive their new badges.
That's awesome.
So Chief, if you could introduce your officers and...
What, John? Mayor, Council, we'd like to promote three of our employees. We've really stressed leadership over the last couple of years, and we couldn't be more proud of these three gentlemen. First will be Darren Allgood. He'll be promoted from the rank of lieutenant to the rank of captain, and he will be badged by his wife, Michelle. This is your chance, Michelle, to stab him.
Chief, the boxes are to us, so we'll only know from the screams how the pinning is going.
So far, so good.
Okay.
Next is Jason Bruner. Next is Jason Bruner, and he will be promoted from the rank of sergeant to the rank of lieutenant, and his wife Jill will be badged. Finally, Mark Garner will be promoted from the rank of patrolman to the rank of sergeant, and he will be pinned by his wife, Jessica. And I would say this, just as a reminder, we kind of take for granted what it is like when you are married to a police officer. And I got to tell you, it changes the day the first time you pin your badge on a loved one. You pay a little more attention to the news, and you pay a little more attention to the community. And so I would say a round of applause to those spouses. Thank you.
Well done, gentlemen and ladies.
Yes, ladies.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Thanks. Appreciate you very much.
Congratulations. Very proud of you guys. I appreciate everything you do.
Congratulations. Well done. Congratulations. Thank you for your service. Thank you and well done.
Makes my heart pound. It's so precious.
Those are some of the best council meetings we have when Chief Costin, when we get to do firefighter pinings and police officer pinings. That kind of lets us get a reminder of what this is all about.
That's true.
Thank you. Now, if we can move on into the public comments portion of our agenda. First on the list is Ms. Amanda Lewis about the Schoolhouse 5K.
I am Amanda Lewis, and I am here to represent the Schoolhouse 5K. And we have had that for the past seven years. So I am just here to see if we can request the same route as last year. We had the large run route with the support of Police and Public Works. Last year, we had eight hundred and fifty people who actually ran the race. And all of our schools were included, and they made, we made over $10,000.
That's awesome.
Each, every dollar goes back to the school. No one profits. So...
What's the date?
The date is April the 25th, and we do realize that that is prom. We set the date, obviously, every year for the same weekend, if we get approval. But our date was set before prom. But we did go back and look through our numbers, and it looks like we only would miss about forty, forty participants.
And you may pick up more than that just year to year.
Yes, yes.
Mayor, I'll make a motion for approval, contingent upon, I guess, Ms. Hoffman receiving everything she needs.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Motion's been made.
Thank you so much.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next on the sign-in sheet for public comment is Mr. John Douglas.
I'm mayor and council. As president of the local Scott County NAACP, it's an opportunity again to come before you to ask for your approval to do our Martin Luther King March on January the 20th, Monday, January 20th at four o'clock. The march route will be our standard route from the Georgetown College up through Military to Main Street, then back down Broadway to College Street and back to the starting point. That'll be the March of 20. We're still expecting about a hundred. Cross my fingers that the winter has slowly gone away and we have a warm forty-degree weather. It's hot for us during that time.
I'm going to make a motion. I'm going to agree with you on that good weather.
Good weather, yes.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? John, now, the speaker in the program will be at First Baptist?
Yes, the city and county program that I'm part of also will be at the First Baptist at five o'clock. The march will end at four, from four to four forty-five, and then it gives time enough for people to go to First Baptist and set up. Got a great speaker there. The other thing I'd like to bring forward to council for your consideration is, we will also be doing our Martin Luther King breakfast on that Saturday, the 18th, at the First Presbyterian Conference Center at nine o'clock. So you'll get more information coming out on that. So if you can put it on your calendar, come on out and kick off the weekend.
The program afterwards is actually the community's celebration. And city and the county share the cost of the stipend for the speaker and flying the speaker in. Robbie Barber normally takes the responsibility of finding a speaker.
Right.
John, you sent me a tape of this gentleman, and I can say with certainty he can preach.
Oh, he can. He's a good speaker, great speaker, actually. So look forward to that, both those programs. Thank you, council, for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the public sign-in sheet is Ms. Samantha Eddy.
Hello. So my name is Samantha, and I'm asking for even less of a road closure than they are, if you can believe that. I want to have a .5K that would go from the corner of College Street and Memorial to the Slantia Public House. We put this concept together because I'm trying to raise $10,000, and I already have about $6,000 for it, and it will go to an organization that provides prosthetic legs for children. So whatever I do not raise, I have to pay out of my pocket because I've signed a contract to run the Boston Marathon in order to raise these funds. So I just would like to close it on March the 21st for probably twenty minutes. I don't need any police, just a couple barricades. There won't be a water station. We might give donuts to the finish line, but it'll be super quick and should be uneventful.
Have they given all of the information to you, Tracy?
I have everything but liability, I believe.
The pub is going to be the liability. They're going to let me use their insurance. They're going, yep.
All right.
Yep.
Now, if we're blocking Main Street, that will require police involvement, won't it?
Probably. Okay.
It's from, you said Memorial Drive to the pub.
Yeah, the pub wanted to end right there at the pub.
Yes, that's right down Main Street. We'll have to have the police involved.
Okay.
I did alert Bruner on it, and he said, "Shouldn't be a problem. It's .5K."
Yeah.
It's a lot easier than 5K.
And I've worked with them before with the Finley race, so I know how to, you know, do it correctly.
Good.
Yep.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you.
Second.
And second. If there are no questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Congratulations. Good luck. Next on the sign-in sheet is actually, he signed in to speak, but will take some action later. Tom Coots is in the audience, and we're appointing Mr. Coots to the Airport Board tonight. And just as a courtesy to the council, he is here. Unless you wanted to speak in particular, Tom, we're prepared to make, we're prepared to work on those appointments in a minute. All of the Airport Board appointments are joint city-county, city-county appointments, and Judge Covington and I have agreed on this one. They'll present it to the court later this month.
Anyway, I wanted to say thank you. I'm Tom Coots. I know most of you. I've been a small business here in town for a long time. I've been a pilot since 1985, so I think I can lend some support to the board. Also, I've worked for FEMA for the last eight years. So a lot of things can happen to a community when storms hit.
Pretty big, pretty good background.
Yeah.
Tom, thank you very much for being here tonight, and we'll get to your appointment here in just a few minutes. That completes the public comments, those who had signed in for public comments tonight. And now, if you could bear with me for a couple of mayor's comments.
Absolutely.
Let's see, Arlene made me notes, and I also...
It's all on one page.
Yes.
I'm impressed.
We, as everybody knows, we had a great Christmas parade this last Saturday night.
Yes.
The weather was perfect, and I'm not sure I've ever seen a larger parade crowd in downtown Georgetown.
It was amazing.
It was pretty remarkable. And I know a number of council members rode on the fire truck, I think. Good. Appreciate y'all participating in that. Also, wanted to point out, for anyone that may be interested in attending, it's a big commitment of time, but the Georgetown Scott County Chamber of Commerce Planning Retreat is this week on the 12th. City is a member of the chamber, and council members are invited to attend that retreat and participate in a committee if anybody would like to. It'll be at the Conference Center beginning at nine o'clock. Also, just as an update, Eddy has been in a series of meetings recently concerning our West Main Street project, the beautification project for West Main Street, that now includes some structural repairs to the viaduct.
Wow.
And Eddy is now engaged in ongoing meetings with the Heritage Council. We've identified what repairs must be made to the viaduct. We could make very extensive repairs, but we found out what repairs we have to make. And we've applied for the additional funds to take care of the work that was not in our original grant proposal. You never know about additional funds, but the feedback we've gotten on a preliminary basis seems to indicate that the state understands and the Heritage Commission understands the importance of this viaduct, and we think additional funding may be forthcoming. We also know that next year, the State Transportation Cabinet will pave all of 460 from Pet Cats all the way out West Main Street. So all of our downtown and our entrances on 460 will be repaved, milled and repaved next year. And of course, we'll want to coordinate this as best we can. But that continues, those conversations continue, and they've been pretty positive.
That's awesome.
Eddy also wanted me to notify the council that he just found out Saturday that the state has executed a change order for the bypass project, the final leg of the bypass, and it's going to include a roundabout.
Wow.
Hey.
I think the fiscal court had its concerns about if a traffic light would be at one particular location, and the state has responded with plans for a roundabout, which inherently, I believe, is safer. The difficulty with roundabouts in some locations is they take more area than a traditional intersection. But in this case, that's not a problem, so we'll probably be the proud owner of a new roundabout in Georgetown with that project. Also, just a reminder to you folks, the, since we have canceled our second meeting in December, and since the calendar falls funny in January, we're going to have a five-week gap from now to our next council meeting, which is unusual for the council. But just wanted to assure you that if there are any issues that come up where we need council action, we'll just do a special called meeting. But I also checked with the clerk's office today, and wanted to remind you all, the filing deadline is January the 10th. It's earlier this year.
Yeah.
At the close of business on that day. And as of today, one person had picked up council papers and no one has filed. Just an update for you. The other announcement that I'd like to make for the council is, we've been talking with you for some time about the financial analysis that Andrew, Stacy, me, and others has been working on and with the Finance Committee and trying to massage that report and make sure it's as understandable as it can be. We would like to announce the date of Thursday, January the 16th, for a special called council meeting at six o'clock to present that financial analysis to the council and the public. Our regularly scheduled council meeting will be on Monday, the 13th. The first council meeting in January will be on Monday, the 13th. So three days later, on August 16th at six o'clock, we will present that financial analysis. We've talked about it so long, it's time to show it to somebody, then each other. We've done a lot of it.
Got it down.
Okay. If we move down to item seven on our agenda...
You have appointments.
Oh, oh, that's right.
Oh, yeah, and you have appointments.
The most important thing I'm supposed to be doing, the board appointments. You have an executive order in your binder appointing Tom Coots for an initial term on the Airport Board and reappointing Steve Woodrum for a second term on the Airport Board. So I'll make those appointments and would ask for a motion to the board.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
And second. Thank you. If there are no questions on those, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We also would like to walk on to the agenda, two other appointments. We have a whole series of board appointments that we need at the end of the year or the very beginning of 2020. And us only having one council meeting in December caught me a little bit unawares on those. But what I would like to do is ask to appoint Dwan Garrett, and I think you have a biosketch about Mr. Garrett. Mr. Garrett has served on the Georgetown Board of Adjustments for two terms. And I've long felt that there's no better training to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission than to have served on the Board of Adjustments. You begin to learn zoning concepts, land use concepts, and how to resolve those issues. So I would like to appoint Dwayne Garrett for an initial term on the Planning Commission.
Motion, Mayor.
Thank you.
Second.
And seconded. If there are no questions, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. And then Ms. Ursula McIntyre, a young lady that is a Assistant Vice President at PNC Bank, has been their branch manager for a number of years, and has served well on our Parks and Recreation Commission. And she has agreed to accept an initial appointment to the Board of Adjustments.
Okay.
Motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
I didn't want to hog it all.
Nah, no, thank you. Motion's been made and seconded.
I was trying to share it.
If there are no questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And we will have a series of other appointments that we'll have ready for the first meeting in January. Also, since we have this gap of time, if council members have any suggestions or know of people who have expressed an interest in serving on the Board, I'd be glad to talk with you about the positions we have open and what kind of fit that folks might be if you have a suggestion. Be glad to hear from you. Now, we can go to City Attorney and have a second reading of the Human Rights Commission ordinance.
An ordinance amending Georgetown Code of Ordinances, Chapter 5, Article 2, regarding the Human Rights Commission. Summary: One, amends Chapter 5 of the Georgetown Code of Ordinances to create a Georgetown Human Rights Commission. Two, establishes the membership and powers of the Commission, defines the process for evaluating complaints, and provides for enforcement of orders issued by the Commission. Three, provides for repeal of inconsistent ordinances, servability of provisions, and effective date upon passage and publication. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the City Clerk's Office, 100 North Court Street, Georgetown, Kentucky 40324, or at www.georgetownky.gov. Introduced and publicly read for the first time November 25th, 2019. Publicly read the second time December 9th, 2019.
Thank you. Is there a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Before we call the vote, something that I want to correct for anyone that may be in the audience or watching on our cable feed, the requirement that we discussed at the last meeting, people being a one-year resident of Scott County, is to be considered for appointment to the Human Rights Commission. It was reported that that was a requirement to file a complaint, which is not correct. I spoke with the publisher about that, but there's been no correction, so I thought I should point it out tonight. If there are no questions, we'll call the roll.
Mr. Lesby?
Yes.
Mrs. Lesby Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Showalter?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. As soon as that ordinance is published, then this ordinance will be complete, and at the first meeting in January, it will be my intention to bring you the five appointees to serve on that commission. Again, would be more than happy to hear recommendations from you. Item B under City Attorney is first reading of an annexation ordinance on Eder Lane.
Mayor, before Ms. Tracy starts, I'm going to step out because I need to recuse myself. Call me when you're done.
Yes, ma'am. So we can let the record reflect that Ms. Tackett has recused herself completely and is now acting as a member of the public. Is that right, Eder?
Do we need a quorum to hear a first reading?
Yeah.
There's no vote going on.
Well, we need a quorum to keep up business.
I would argue that's not going to... But we could, if we want to be certain, we can push it to the next, the next meeting, I guess.
Three unanticipated absences really affects our ability to do business.
Do we need to motion to table it to the next meeting or just pass it?
Just do nothing.
I think we just pass it.
We can just read it at the next meeting.
Listen.
Yeah, I mean, there were two anticipated absences, but the third was...
Yeah, we can't even do that. Never mind.
Right.
It's kind of foolish, wasn't it?
I'm sorry. That's out of our, that's out of your control or my control?
Yeah.
We'll put that off till when we have more council members present. Would you like to invite Connie back in?
I guess the same goes for C and D. No, because she'll be back in here, so we'll have... Oh, we already pushed the...
No one told me about that.
I would have had to recuse myself, so...
I know, that's what I was saying.
Connie, we realize we have no quorum.
I'm that special.
You're that special. So we're going to have to pass on items B and C, and item D has been withdrawn for this meeting and will be back at the next meeting. So we're going to have to bring all three of those back to you at the next meeting, and hopefully we'll have a better attendance at that time.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Item eight under City Engineer, we have a municipal order approving a bid for the Ward Hall facade. The ongoing saga of spending the federal grant for Ward Hall, they got some of the work that they wanted to get done completed, and they had some funds left over. So they've gone back through a bid process, and this bid is to paint the columns of Ward Hall, do some work on some rotten wood around the tops of the columns, and paint the front facade.
So the bid, do you want me to make a motion? Motion for approval?
Thank you.
Second.
Second. And if there are no questions, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Item B on the agenda is a municipal order approving a change order for Lanes Run Business Park. If you all will recall, when we were in our property acquisition mode to put all the parcels together, we intentionally did not complete the purchase of Gaylord Highlander's property where the log cabin is situated. So at some point in the future, we anticipate that that acquisition might happen, but it hasn't yet. So this change order is to give Mr. Highlander a curb cut so he doesn't have to jump over curb to reach his own property.
That makes sense, ma'am.
Motion. Second.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. If there are no questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That carries. Item C is a municipal order approving a bid for a Lanes Run pump station removal. This was the very complex transaction that we went through with Scaryot Corporation to get their sewer needs met, and until we finished a part of our expansion on the sewer line, there had to be a pump station to handle their effluent.
Right.
Now, we're ready. This is a change order to remove that pump station, since we can now go back to a conventional sewer line situation.
Yeah, which would be the gravity flow, I guess.
Yes.
Motion for approval?
Thank you.
Second.
And second. Thanks, Tammy. If there are no questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And item nine, Andrew, we're holding off?
Yes.
Okay.
Probably has gone.
Well, we're to the point of council comments. Todd?
Nothing.
Thank you.
Not used to firing on five cylinders, but we got through it.
We did get through it.
I don't know what else we need to do tonight, but I'll pass until I think of something.
Thank you. Connie? Connie?
I just want to say for our last council member meeting for December, Merry Christmas to everybody. Like you all a lot, like working with you, and hope you have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. See you next year.
See you next year. That's good. Mark? Tammy? If there's nothing else come for the council, we will stand adjourned.